All right, so we'll call the meeting to order. And we'll begin, Dawn, with the roll call council. So what do you?
Counselor Sean Sampson. Counselor Michael Diggan.
Present.
Deputy Warden Melanie Sampson.
Present.
Warden Amanda Mumberkett.
Present.
Counselor Brent Sampson.
Okay, so Counselor Sampson isn't with us this evening, so that completes our roll call. Thank you, Dawn. And so we have, I guess, one agenda on our, on our, one item on our agenda this evening, excuse me. And before we get started on that, I just want to say thank you to counselors and staff for, and everybody who's attending this evening for joining us. And I'm going to start out our discussion on public committee meetings with a quick, with a little statement. So if you'll bear with me. I just wanted to express a concern that has been brought to our attention last week by a couple of members of the media, actually, that our recent bylaw and policy meetings have not been advertised to the public. I brought the matter to the attention of staff and council once it was brought to my attention. And after looking back through our website and social media and communications back and forth and stuff, it has become clear that our public committee meetings have not been adequately advertised. In order for a public meeting to be public, then the public must know it's happening. Otherwise, it's effectively private. In the past, we have taken steps to ensure our bylaw and policy committee meetings are public. I know it's, we've seen it advertised on the website at some points in the past. And I know that, you know, counselors will recall that when we were meeting in person just before regular or council meetings, you know, when people would arrive in time for the committee meeting, they were actively invited to enter council chambers. Our intentions have been clear, but unfortunately, our practice has fallen short. The Municipal Government Act sets out guidelines which municipalities must follow. Section 22 of the MGA, as we affectionately call it, states that council meetings and meetings of committees appointed by council are open to the public. It also states in section 24-4 that a committee shall operate in accordance with the procedures provided in the act. And the procedural policy for council applies to those meetings, including being public and providing notice and advertising meetings. So the bylaw and policy committee meeting was, or committee, excuse me, was appointed by council. We affirmed that through two motions of council just after we were elected, as counselors will recall, one to kind of approve our committee structure, and another to improve appoint, approve appointees to those committees. So all that being said, I called this emergency meeting this evening because I know that everyone here takes that promise very seriously. We need to recognize the municipality's error and perhaps most importantly, to develop solutions to correct the error immediately. Council has been clear and consistent in our intention that we want to be accountable and open. And we've had those conversations repeatedly at the council table and with our constituents. We recognize that we have not met your expectations to ensuring that our public committee meetings, specifically our bylaw policy committee, committee meetings are just that public. So I wanted to begin by, I guess, offering my personal apology to constituents and also to apologize on behalf of the municipality for not living up to our promise to be fully accountable. But that being said, I do think there's opportunity here for learning and an opportunity for a solution to be put forward. And so counselors in preparing for this evening, you know, I spoke with several of you over the last number days. Committees which were appointed by council just after we were elected and further over which we have direct control or where, when we have to bring action back to council to advance the decisions or actions of those committees are, there's a number of them. They include our committee of the whole, audit committee, our planning advisory and heritage committee, our bylaw policy committee, police advisory board, our municipal emergency management committee, our accessibility committee, and our fire services committee. So I guess at this point, I would be looking for some discussion from council, suggesting perhaps that we pass a motion to instruct staff to treat these committees as committees appointed by council and make them public in accordance with the requirements of the MGA, including advertising them. But I would like to just, I guess, begin by opening for general discussion to see how counselors are feeling about that list of committees I mentioned. But also just in general, any other thoughts or suggestions they might have for improvement. So I'll just open the floor, and if you could give me a sign that, you know, when you, if you'd like to speak up, that would be really helpful. Counselor Diggan?
Madam Warden, I'm just referring to the, and I'm not, I didn't write down all of them, but the fire services committee, which I'm more than, I'm on that committee zone, more than happy to have it open to the general public. But is it not, I thought it was a mandatory of three counselors per meeting that required an open, or is that just a?
Yeah, so I, you know, we did look for clarification, I remember, on that some time ago because there had been discussion back and forth. But essentially, counselor, you know, the clarification between what constitutes a meeting that would need to be public or not public really boils down to, you know, if, if one or, if more than one counselor is meeting and discussing business that are of council and moving business forward, that should be a public meeting. So the number of counselors is not really relevant. You know, because, I mean, five of us could show up at a community breakfast, right? And that's not a public meeting. So when I discussed that with municipal affairs, you know, just to make sure that I had that clarification today, that was what they confirmed for me, was that counselors must be very careful when gathering formally, you know, at things like a breakfast, not to discuss council business or to be trying to move business forward. But that specifically, you know, but specifically, it's not based on the number of counselors in the room. Deputy Warden?
Thank you. And so, yeah, so it's about where the locus of control lies, I think, right? You know, we do, and I chatted a little bit about that. And so it seems to be that committees of council are committees where decisions can't be made at the committee level. They need to be brought to council to be decided upon, right? So, because I know we chatted a bit and I thought a bit about the fire services committee as well. Was it more of an advisory committee or was it like a decision-making body or was it one? But everything that they do, you know, everything you folks do there eventually comes back to council to make a decision. And so I would agree. Can you, Warden, could you, I jotted them down, and I think that they match my list. But if you could just repeat your list one more time, that would be helpful for me.
Sure. So the committees that I had listed were committee of the whole, audit committee, planning advisory or heritage committee, bylaw and policy committee, our police advisory board, municipal emergency management committee, our accessibility advisory committee, and our fire services committee.
The police advisory, that would be the only one that I didn't have. And I'm just not sure about that. Is, is that one like a part of the MGA that we shall have it? Or what, what was your decision-making piece to include that one?
The decision-making for me on that one is that it is, I believe it is a required, we have a policing services requirement in the MGA. And because we, we provide funding for policing services is why I included that. That committee, I don't believe, also will be able to make like a full-on decision on its own, but it would provide recommendations back to council. And please, anyone who was on police advisory, if you could, you know, provide clarity, okay?
Yeah, myself, Madam Warden, I am on the police advisory committee. We meet on a quarterly basis, I'm pretty sure. Yeah, there's a lot of information given by Sergeant Ed Nugent when it comes to policing in Richmond County. So for me, yeah, that, that, that should be a public meeting. And the public should be able to see and take in all that information into in those meetings. So, yeah.
Thank you, counselor. Deputy Warden, yes?
Um, I know that the CAO had reached out to legal counsel to get some clarification in terms of what committees would be constituted committees of council. Just wondering if maybe Dawn could, could add some context to the conversation, please?
When I spoke, when I spoke to Noah, I essentially asked him whether or not committees of council needed to be advertised. So and of course, there were a few other issues that I asked him about regarding releasing draft information. I didn't, and, and in his email to me, he didn't clarify what a committee of council was because the MGA is not very clear on it. It's actually vague, actually, on, on what a committee of council really is. So it's, it's left to interpretation, I guess. And his ultimate decision was to indicate that if we wanted to make any changes or if we wanted to specify that we should create a policy.
Thank you, Dawn. I think the terminology in the MGA I'm looking at right now is that it uses the term committees appointed by council.
Yeah.
Yes. So that, you know, that's.
Yeah. So the question there is, are, are these committees that we require advertising committees that councils are appoint, counselors are appointed on? Or is it committees that council has appointed? In other words, bylaw policy would be one of those meeting, one of those committees that was created by council. It was created by staff and council, basically approved, approved it. However, there are some committees that are mandatory, audit committees mandatory, emergency management committee is mandatory. I believe police advisory is as well, committee of the whole, of course, we all know that's mandatory. PAC, we, we've always advertised, advertised those committees as far back as I can remember. So, yeah, so, so the, yeah, so those, those committees were not created by council. So we appoint, and audit committee is all council. Bylaw policy is all of council, and emergency management is all of council as well.
Right, and I, thank you, Dawn, yeah. And, you know, I, regardless of where the origins of bylaw and policy committee came from, you know, I guess, I would suggest that when we approved a committee structure after just being elected, we effectively, we created that committee as a, as a committee of this current council. And, and, you know, it also suggests that we also appointed us as members to it. And I, I think, you know, for me, I appreciate the, the legal advice that was received. My, my main concern is our intent. Our intent has been pretty clear in that we want to make sure that our, our committee meetings are open. And, and it would be inappropriate. And really, it would be also in contravention of the MGA for council to be meeting to discuss moving council business forward by developing, you know, policies and bylaws without that being open to the public. So I think that's where, I think at the end of the day, that's, you know, that's where we need to be worried is that we, you know, we've been moving council business forward in meetings that have not been publicly advertised.
And that, that's exactly what, what the lawyer did say. So the legal advice did include that we should be advertising these if our intention is to have the public attend.
Yes, thank you. Yeah, great, thank you.
So I would take that to also mean that the intent, that, that basically what would happen is like all of, you know, like our committee of the whole and our, our regular council meetings, we would properly advertise those in the same fashion with the same day's notice. We would be publishing the connection details if we're doing it virtually. We'd be publishing our agendas as well. Do I take all that to mean those pieces? Because that's what I would hope, is what we mean when we're having these conversations.
Yeah, and I, I think that's a great point, Deputy Warden. And, and really, you know, I, I guess, for me, the MGA is pretty clear on this. It states very specifically that a committee shall operate in accordance with the procedures provided in the act. And the procedural policy for council applies to committees. So whatever procedures we follow for council meetings should also apply to committee meetings.
Yeah, yeah.
Counselor Diggan, do you have a comment? Oh, counselor, we're actually not able to hear you right now. Your sound must have cut out. Could be the wind. Okay, well, Counselor Diggan is getting that worked out. Although, any other comments from counselors? Okay, it's, oh, Stephanie Ward.
Well, at the risk of just talking too much, I guess what I'm going to say is that, you know, I can appreciate CAO Marshawn's comment in terms of creating policy to make this very clear in terms of specifically what meetings we, you know, which committees we view in that way, and I would agree with that. So I think, I think that to move forward, you know, for today, we want to absolutely put a motion forward to recognize those committees that have been listed as committees, if we're going to follow exactly what is listed in the MGA in section 22, right, that they are committees appointed by council and should be treated that way. And then we should refer to bylaw and policy. We'll create a policy that specifically lists those as well to, to further solidify that motion. So barring comments from Counselor Diggan, I would be prepared to make that motion.
Okay, thanks, Deputy Warden. Counselor Diggan, is your sound working okay now?
Yeah, I'm not sure. Can you hear me?
Yes, yeah.
You, you probably liked it better the other way, but I apologize. The, the only question I guess I would have, and maybe it's just whether you call it a board, a committee, or, you know, or whatever, does it also, I guess, reflect, let's say, the Richmond Villa Board? Is that something that has to be, and I, and I just don't know, again, because we have three counselors on it, does it become? And I know the number isn't really the, the statute that we're looking at, but I just want to know, is that the?
So that's a good question. It's a really good question, counselor. And the difference being though, is to think that, that a matter of our, you know, ability to control, you know, the, the decisions that are made in these committees, right? So the, the board of directors for the Richmond Villa, you know, governs the Richmond Villa from a policy level. They do not need to bring policy recommendations back to council in order to be able to take action. So for instance, you know, with all the expansion work, all of those decisions are made directly by the board of directors of the villa. And, and it's really, it's not a forum where we discuss council business. So in my mind, it's, it doesn't qualify as a committee of council. Even if we were, all five of us were on that board, it's an independent board, you know, as opposed to something like fire services or police, you know, advisory or accessibility advisory. All of the decision-making must come back through council in order for us to be able to take action, particularly if there was budget, you know, implications.
Was the Richmond Board of Entrepreneurial Joint Development committee on the list?
Yes. So no, no, it wasn't, because that committee exists as a result of an act in the legislature. And, and the commission itself is a legal entity. And again, you know, would not have to bring decisions back to councils, their respective councils, in order to take action.
So, yeah, I guess, I'm, I'm five, the deputy warden, if there was a motion she could just put forward.
Okay, so maybe just so I'm making sure that we're clear, Deputy Warden, I'll restate those committees. So it was, I believe the motion was to pass a motion to instruct staff to treat the following committees appointed by council, committee of the whole, audit committee, planning advisory and heritage committee, bylaw and policy committee, police advisory committee, municipal emergency management committee, accessibility advisory committee, fire services committee, to treat those as public meetings in accordance with the requirements set out in the MGA, including advertising them accordingly on our website and social media.
Yeah, I agree. That's, that's the list I have as well.
Okay, great. So I think that is moved by Deputy Warden. Could I have a second on that motion, please?
I'll second that motion.
Counselor Sean Sampson, thank you very much. Any further discussion? Okay, so all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? That motion is carried. All right. So further, I think Deputy Warden, you mentioned it already, that we could potentially make a motion to, you know, enshrine this, this practice in formal policy by referring it to our policy and bylaw meeting?
Yes, yeah, okay. Yeah, I'd like to make that motion as well.
Okay. Could I have a second on that motion? Thank you, Counselor Diggan. On further discussion, I would like to note that we should schedule that policy and bylaw committee for as soon as possible. So Dawn, I know that Monday wasn't a good day when I had checked earlier with staff. But, but I think if, if we could try for Wednesday of next week, that would be, that would be really great if, if counselors and staff could check their schedules, and we, Dawn, you and I can follow up on that.
Yeah, that's fine. Would you be looking to have staff prepare a draft policy for that meeting as well?
Um, yeah, I know we have lots of other policies to discuss. We have quite a list. But if, you know, if that was possible, that would be great. But I do recognize that that is, you know, that is less than a week away. And so if, if possible, that, that would be great, even if it was just the bones of, of something for now would be helpful. If not, I think we should still probably schedule a meeting because we have a lot of other items on our list to discuss. And, and we could at least get started.
Yep.
All right, thank you. And so any further discussion on that motion? Okay, so all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Okay, that motion is carried. Thanks, everyone.
Warden, um, Warden, if I may, I, I'm also just aware that, you know, there's been some bylaw policy items posted to the website previously, some have not, and as well as these other committees. And I'm just, you know, I, I'm just wondering how, if and how we could like do some retroactive work? Because I think, you know, that was certainly what our intention was, and to have all of these meetings, that at least the agendas be public. So is the, I, I guess I have a question as well. Are the minutes required to be public? We put our minutes from our committee of the whole and regular council meeting. So I would assume that all of these as well would be for sure on a go-forward basis be posted. And I'm just wondering if, and again, I would look to Dawn in terms of like what's possible from a staff perspective to go back and post some of these minutes and agendas.
Yeah, I think if we're following the procedure of regular council meetings, then yeah, you're, you're exactly right, Deputy Warden. And so, so, I mean, we could, I guess, Dawn, maybe look to staff to provide the minutes for, you know, for those, those meetings that we listed, maybe at least back until the time of our election. I think would, I, I don't know if going beyond that would be reasonable.
I'm not sure it'd be practical or necessary. I mean, we could provide those if we were requested with them. But, but, you know, again, I think it was one of those items where we didn't really realize that's, it wasn't happening.
Yeah, that's right. Yeah, yeah.
I think if we were to make a decision on minutes, we would have to include that in the policy. Because I know that committee of the whole and council meetings are all legislated with respect to timelines and deadlines posting minutes.
Okay.
But there, but there are no requirements in GMGA post-minutes of committees of council. So we would probably likely have to include that in, in the policy as well.
So, well, Dawn, I, you know, I, I know, I don't, I know what you mean. There's not really a specific instruction for committees. But the instruction is, in that section 24-4, is that the committee shall operate in accordance with the procedures provided in the act. And the procedural policy for council applies to committees. So if that's what we're doing for council, then it would seem that we must do it also for committees.
Yeah, but I don't think we have a procedural policy right now, so we're posting minutes. We follow the legislation based on what the province tells us we were required to do. So.
I said referring to the MGA as part of our policy, you know, I guess is how I interpret that.
Yeah.
And so then, I mean, we can certainly enshrine that in a policy. I think, I think we probably also want to make those, you know, minutes, you know, publicly available as soon as possible. So, you know, if there was a, a motion to be made regarding that, posting minutes for those meetings. Is that your kind of intent for this evening, Deputy Warden?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, I mean, I think, you know, just, it's a separate motion because it's a separate item. But, but I do, and I do, I would definitely agree with you, Dawn, if it's not clear in the MGA that minutes are to be circular, you know, are to be posted, we, we would want it back to be part of our policy as well for those committees. So agendas before and minutes after, yeah.
Yeah, I, I, I agree. I think one of our, I, I'm sure I can speak for all of us, but one of our major things was transparency. And the last thing I want is anybody to think we're not. So again, if that means we have to go back on what we did in the past and correct it, well, then so be it. But again, if, if it's not written, if it's not written, no, then it's your job to make sure it is, gets written, no. And follow policy procedure is.
Thanks, counselor. So then, would someone like to make a motion to instruct staff to post past agendas and minutes from those specified meeting committees of council meetings on the website? I'll make that motion. Thanks, Deputy Warden.
I'll second that motion. Yeah.
Thank you, Counselor Diggan. Any further discussion on that?
Did I just say something?
Yes.
Are we going to put like a, a time, a timeline, like how far back are we going to go to do that?
Yeah. So, did you, did you want to do to October 2020?
Well, November 2020.
Whichever, yeah, November 2020.
Yeah. And I don't think, either, I mean, this is obviously like a more of an operational comment, Dawn. But like, it's not that they need to be in date orders or whatever. I think on the website, we have the ability to create a folder, and the folder could just be, you know, like audit minutes, and they could all just be dumped in the full, you know, in the folder. So I recognize that there is a lot of minutes through all of these, right? So the intention here is not to make a ton of work. It, you know, we want to make it relatively easy for this, for the public to find the items. But no need to, you know, kind of try to fit them in. We've got like a bit of a long list, so folders might actually work better anyway. So, but, but just, you know, again, trying to make it not overly complicated.
Yeah, I think the, that's a great point, actually. I think putting a folder at, at this stage is probably appropriate. We don't like, we don't want to hide them in the digs as well. We don't want to go back and start shoving them in behind, make it look like we're just dropping them in something we haven't done. So honestly, I think since the meeting being held tonight, where we, we made a motion to include it, then we may want to have just a folder of, you know, one special folder broken down with the, with each of the committees, you know, for past meetings. That way there, anybody who wanted to catch up or thought they missed something, it's very easy for them to go back and find it.
Okay. Does that provide you with enough context, Dawn? Is that?
Yep.
Okay, great. Okay, so any further discussion on that motion?
Question?
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, that motion is carried. I did want to just touch very briefly, Dawn, you mentioned that when you had reached out to Noah, to the solicitor, that you had chatted with him about making draft policies, you know, that have been discussed, discussed in public meeting about not making them public versus making them public. And I understand that there'd be kind of a risk to releasing a policy that's not, not accurate, not accepted, you know? And we don't want to create, you know, a, a false expectation of public by doing that. However, at the same time, it is a matter of public record. And I just wondered what, you know, can you give us some detail on, on what he described to you with that?
Well, it was quite brief. We were on the phone and, and of course, I'd received the email from, from yourself. And, and in, in the essence of time, I, I just explained to Noah quickly. And he gave me his response and ensured me that if I needed any, any written response in more detail, that he could provide it. So that could also be an option. I could also get Noah to, you know, to provide us more detail on that.
Yeah, so his initial response was that it would be too much of a risk, was it?
Um, yeah, for, too much of a risk for many reasons for. for, for exactly that, providing a, a policy that was not not final.
Okay.
But I, I think, I think it's more so providing the copy. I mean, it's, 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 people are going to be involved in the, in, in the, you know, through the public visitation of, of these meetings, and they're going to see that the draft policy. But we're not going to provide that to the public. It's, it's no different than when we, when we do our, our audit committee or, and, and we have draft financial statements. We don't provide that to the, to the public either, and there's a real good reason why, because they're not complete. And, and that's, that's the reason why he was, you know, agreeing that recommending or recommending that, that those draft policies not be released to the public.
Deputy Warden, thank you, Dawn, Deputy Warden.
I would agree wholeheartedly with both Noah's comments and Dawn's kind of follow-up comments to that. Like, I think that providing draft policies, we all know through bylaw policy meetings, that we go through many different iterations of this, of a document, and they can be different. Quite, you know, they can be quite different. And I think, you know, sharing with the public what we're talking about or what we're considering is totally fair and right, and that's part of that public participation in the, in the meeting, right? Being at the meeting and listening and whatever. And I, I would agree that, you know, publishing draft policies or bylaws until they are moving forward to a council meeting would not be appropriate, in, in my opinion, because I think sometimes what happens is people see the document, and we may have the word draft on it, but people don't see the word draft necessarily, you know, and just take it to mean this is exactly how it's going to go. And we know very well that we've had draft policies that have gone in completely different directions. And so my feeling would be, we would need to be at the end of that road. And I don't mean passed by council, but I mean passed by council out of bylaw policy and on its way to the committee of the whole before it's something that would be shared, would be my opinion, but.
Okay, thanks, Deputy Warden.
Yes. Yeah, and I, and I'm in, I'm in agreement with Deputy Warden and the C E O for sure. And I mean, if these, if these committee meetings and, and all these, these draft policies are going to be discussed publicly, and, and the public's going to be part of these meetings, then of course they're, they're, they're going to be aware of where the policy is going and what direction the policy is going in. And they can almost assume what the final policy is going to look like. So coming up with a draft one during that process, when the public is, is, is aware, and part of that, that process, to me, is, is, yeah, is, is, is not a good idea for sure. Yeah. And, and again, they're gonna, they're gonna be part of, they're gonna be part of the process. They're, they're probably going to be able to assume what a policy is going to look like, you know, so no need to see a draft.
Thank you, Counselor Sampson. Um, I think that, oh, sorry, Counselor Diggs.
I like the button. So I guess the only, the only issue I would have, and it's not an issue, I guess, would be to make sure that, one, we are following G M, the M G A requirements, and two, that we're not blindsiding people by not, I, I understand, you know, Deputy Warden's concern, or Sampson's concern of not publishing it, because people might get the wrong idea. I just hope by not publishing it, we're not giving people the wrong idea that we are trying to be, so. So I guess my, my question would be, would we, we, would we publish the, I guess, the audio part, where somebody can go back into our, and, or would we just, how, how is that any different than, than not doing it now?
So we haven't typically published audio. I think that would get really difficult in terms of file sizes, and, you know, when you think about the, the length of our discussions there, but I, you know, but you know, I guess from, I, part of my question on this one is, I, I kind of agree with, you know, very draft policies that are not left policy and bylaw, but once they do get referred to council meetings, I feel like, you know, they become part of the public record even more so, and, and that's a different threshold. And so, so Counselor Diggs, and I'm, you know, I, I do think, like, a lot of times, a policy and bylaw, we draft back, and, and it's, it's like so incomplete, it's not even really, you know what I mean? Because we're, we are formulating our thoughts in the discussion, but once it gets referred out from policy and bylaw to council for discussion, then it's coherent, right? Then it's starting to look like what a final is probably going to look like in H P market draft, and make it, you know, part of the public record, right? I.
But at, at that stage, aren't we already at the point, excuse me, where we're going to bring it to committee the whole anyway? Which is, which is already televised and open to the public? So I guess my, my, my only issue there is, leading up to that stage, we're leaving the public out, and then if they want to go back to find anything, well, so I guess if they missed the meeting, and they want to go back, then there's no way for them to go back in and interpreting that was done or said if we don't publish it.
Yeah.
They could review.
I, it would, it would, yeah, so the most of our discussion would be in the minutes, but I do think Counselor Diggs and our vaccination policies are really good example of this, right? So as we were drafting it, there was, there were things in there that, you know, just didn't make sense in the context of Richmond County, but we would, you know, staff was pulling best practices from a lot of different places, and we were having conversations about it. But then we did refer it out of policy and bylaw to council. Now, at that point, it, you know, it's a draft policy that's coming to council for approval. We chose not to approve it because we wanted to send it back to policy and bylaw, and I think the advice was to get some legal advice on it to make sure anything you know, that would not stand court of law type of thing. Um, you know, so, so that to me is a different threshold. And you know.
So I guess only for clarification, sorry, only for clarification for staff, if, if we don't, and that's a true, and now that one, you know, question in bylaw policy, do we now start drafting that part? Or do we start not drafting, do we now start showing that part? Or is we hold off again until it comes back to?
Well, that's, I guess that's kind of part of my question with, with bringing this up tonight, was, you know, if at any point do we make a draft public? And I feel like once it hits a hour. Oh, hey, good. There we go. Um. Yeah, I, I'm sorry, I kind of was, that's the reason to public record. Is it at that incoherent discussion stage in committee? Is it at the draft stage at council, or is it only after it's approved? That's, I guess, the clarification.
So I guess now, now we already do it when it's after it's approved, correct?
Yes.
So the whole purpose of the meeting tonight is to do it prior to approval, because people have been missing out on the meetings, or am I miss?
Well, I'm, I'm just asking a question at this point, you know, you know, we're, we're making sure in this, in this forum that we're setting the expectation and, and proactives that are, the meetings will be public. When it goes, you know, past committee, that's to me where the question mark is. Because we, you know, we need to, we need to make a decision as a council, and I think maybe, maybe it's to get some legal advice at that stage, once it's referred from policy and bylaw, and it becomes part of a council meeting, a committee of the whole, or a regular council meeting for discussion. At this, it becomes public, part of the public record at that point, right? So maybe that, that's where we get some clarification from the solicitor, would, would that make sense?
I, I just like, there's no other documents that we publish in advance of a meeting that we end up approving at a meeting. We, it's just not been our practice. So I can appreciate what you're saying. I just would, would say I, I would disagree that once the, you know, the, the discussion is had at bylaw policy, and now that, or, or whatever meeting, right? So we're, we're very focused on bylaw policy, but I mean, it's the same as our, our draft budget is a great example, right? That would come out of audit. So audit committee would say we're going to discuss certain things that members of the public could attend, so they can hear the conversation that we're having in terms of building our budget. And then when audit committee is completed, they make a motion to refer to committee of the whole, we, you know, we'd all know the process, but it, it doesn't get shared publicly in an official way until it is approved by us at council. Right, so we're not doing it for anything else. But now we're talking about maybe doing that for our bylaws or policies or whatever, you know, policies in particular. And, and again, I would just say until it is approved by council, the physical document, in my opinion, is not a publishable document, because it's not approved by us. The discussion is had, right? So if you want to, you know, you look at the agenda, oh, today they're going to talk about, you know, whatever, you know, pick a, pick a policy, doesn't matter, right? We're going to talk about it, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna attend the meeting, because I want to hear what they're talking about. And when we have the conversation, we basically go through the policy, and we talk about what's in there, and what we like and what we don't like, and how we want to change it. I mean, we don't necessarily need to see the document to know what the document says. It is well discussed and, and documented in minutes. So again, I would, you know, feel free to get legal advice, I guess, if, if others would think that that's appropriate. Personally, I just think I don't need legal advice to know that we don't do it with other items for good reason, because that's the process. You know, with our budget or with whatever, and I'm not, I, I don't see the value in presenting those prior to approval, because there's lots of conversation that is public prior to, right?
So right now, where then conversations, if you missed the meeting, are then conversations available to, if somebody missed the, again, the bylaw policy, dog catcher, any, any policy or meeting that we go over? I guess the question is, if they miss that meeting on a Tuesday night, is it available for them to get it anywhere?
So I guess it would be through the minutes, or maybe you're to reach out to the counselor, to a counselor, or the warden, or whoever, and, and, you know, we can, like, because I'm happy to discuss draft policies with folks, you know what I mean? I think that's probably a good thing, and if people have questions, and, you know, to run through it, I, I think, I think that would be really great, if there was that level of interest from the public, you know? So, but, but that would be typically how you do it, is you reach out to your counselor, or you look at the minutes.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so any further discussion then on public committee meetings? Okay. And I'm very conscious of the fact that we could lose our power at any time here, so. I'm not rushing us, this is an important topic, and I, and again, I, I guess to close up, I'll just, I'll just say again, to the folks watching this evening, to the folks who would be later watching on T L L or in other ways, on, on, on the internet. I want to express our regret for the situation and reassure everyone that we are going to take these steps to make sure that it doesn't happen in the future. I also want to express my thanks specifically to the members of the public and, and to our media partners who, who continue to attend council meetings, pay close attention, and to provide us with feedback and constructive advice, you know, to ensure we're doing the best job that we can to, to govern responsibly. I will also maybe mention that, you know, for members of the media or public, you know, after this meeting, I'm happy to stay online for a bit. Yvonne, you can make me the, or I think I already am the co-host, and you can just stop the recording and happy to answer questions now, or we can make an, an arrangement to chat at a later date. My email address is on our website, or, or as well. And, and I would just, yeah, encourage also members of the public, reach out to us anytime. And also that we have question periods at our committee whole coming up on February 14th, and also during our regular council meetings, so lots of opportunity to connect and discuss. So with that being said, if there's no further comments, I will ask for an adjournment. Motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Thanks, Counselor Diggs. Could I have a second on that?
Yeah, I'll second that motion.
Thanks, Counselor Sampson. Further discussion?
Question?
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Okay, that motion is carried and.